Well, welcome everyone. I would like to reconvene the Evanston City Council meeting. It's an exciting time for all of you and for all of our newly elected mayor and alderman. Mayor Bis, you're going to need one thing to do this job. I hope you don't have to use it very often. I was fortunate and didn't, but I want to hand the official, Daniel Bis, mayor of the city of Evanston, Gavel, off to you, and you will begin the proceedings with the judge.
I'm going to step off.
Vigo or whatever.
I do not.
Okay. Thank you very much, everybody. Can you please raise your right hand? And repeat after me. I, Daniel Bis.
I, Daniel Bis.
Having been elected to the office of mayor in the city of Evanston.
Having been elected to the office of mayor in the city of Evanston.
In Cook County.
In Cook County.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of mayor to the best of my abilities.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of mayor to the best of my abilities.
Okay. You got it now. Mayor, I wanted us to hurry up and do this.
Thank you Judge Lionel Jean Baptiste for giving us the honor of kicking this ceremony off. It means a great, great deal. As I understand it, the next step is for all of us together, the nine incoming council members, the incoming clerk and myself, to jointly recite the Athenian oath. Do I have that right?
Yes.
Excellent. In that case, could I please have all 10 of you come forward to recite the Athenian oath together?
So, the Assistant City Master asked me to take the lead in starting the meeting. Okay? So, are we ready? Everybody has the text in front of them, right?
Yes.
Okay, this is the Athenian oath of citizenship. And we can read it together, okay? We will ever strive for the ideals and sacred things of the city, both alone and with many. We will unceasingly seek to quicken the sense of public duty. We will revere and obey the city's laws and will transmit this city not less but greater and more beautiful than what it was transmitted to us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next, just to give you a little shape of where things are going to go, we are next are going to be privileged to hear an invocation from Pastor Monte Dillard. Thank you so much for joining us and giving us this blessing. Subsequent to that, I will then swear in the nine council members and the clerk one at a time. So now we all go sit back down, and it will come back up, 10 separate swearings in, subsequent to the invocation.
Let us pray. Our God and our Father, we are filled with great joy and tremendous appreciation, having now this opportunity tonight to take part in this great work of acknowledgement, celebration, and transition for our wonderful city. Thank you for those who have labored in the past, who have committed tremendous time, both in effort and away from their families, to get the wonderful city of Evanston to this point. And now for those who will continue and/or transition in, we ask for a very special blessing of favor, strength, wisdom, and agreement, that they may continue to do this tremendous work. We specifically bless each of their families, who will make sacrifices of time, of resources, to support these great men and women who will serve in all of these capacities, and we ask that their sacrifice and their support would be blessed as well. Scripture teaches us that there is no authority that exists except that which God has instituted. And so thank you for, by whatever means you have done it, appointed these to serve for such a time as this. Now bless this evening, and bless the many days, weeks, months, and years ahead. In Christ's name I pray. Amen. God bless you.
Thank you Pastor Dillard. So we will begin with the first ward council member elect. And when each of you come, if you would like to bring your family and guests with you, to be photographed with you as you take the oath, please feel free. Please raise your right hand. I, Claire Kelly.
I, Claire Kelly.
Have been elected to the office of council member.
Having been elected to the office of council member.
In the city of Evanston, in the county of Cook, aforesaid.
In the city of Evanston, in the county of Cook, aforesaid.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of council member to the best of my abilities.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of council member to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations, council member.
Thank you.
Councilmember Braithwaite, come forward. There it is. It's happening. We have a ninth of a council already. I'm sorry, we're going to skip to the third ward. Councilmember Wynn, are you available? I know it's the best word, but he wants to wait.
He's just waiting for his family.
Are you ready?
Yes.
Would you raise your right hand? I, Melissa Wynn.
I, Melissa Wynn.
Having been elected to the office of council member.
Having been elected to the office of council member.
In the city of Evanston, in the county of Cook, aforesaid.
In the city of Evanston, in the county of Cook, aforesaid.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of council member to the best of my abilities.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of council member to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations, council member.
Thank you.
With our masks on.
My colleague, Alderman Bobby Burns, is willing to go next. That will give my wife and daughter a couple more minutes to get here.
Sure.
Oh, are you ready? Sorry, so councilmember Braithwaite's ready, so we'll...
We're going back into order.
Do they come up now?
Yeah, they're well open too. Are you ready? Glad you guys are here. Would you raise your right hand? Repeat after me, please. I, Peter C. Braithwaite.
I, Peter C. Braithwaite.
Having been elected to the office of council member.
Having been elected to the council... Office of council member.
In the city of Evanston, in the county of Cook, aforesaid.
In the city of Evanston, in the county of Cook, aforesaid.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of council member to the best of my abilities.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the council to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations, council member.
Thank you very much.
Mask on, mask off.
Go right ahead, belay practice. Are you ready?
I'm ready. You guys ready?
All right. Would you please raise your right hand? I, Jonathan Nusma.
I, Jonathan Nusma.
Having been elected to the office of council member.
Having been elected to the office of council member.
In the city of Evanston, in the county of Cook, aforesaid.
In the city of Evanston, in the county of Cook, aforesaid.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of council member to the best of my abilities.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of council member to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations, council member.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Give him a picture.
Councilmember Burns. So adorable, my God. She's a little behaved with that. Are you ready?
Yes, sir.
Would you raise your right hand, please? I, Bobby Burns.
I, Bobby Burns.
Having been elected to the office of council member.
Having been elected to the office of council member.
In the city of Evanston, in the county of Cook, aforesaid.
In the city of Evanston, in the county of Cook, aforesaid.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of council member to the best of my abilities.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of council member to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations, council member.
Thank you.
Are you ready?
Yes, good.
Hey there. Please raise your right hand. I, Thomas M. Sufferton.
I, Thomas M. Sufferton.
Having been elected to the office of council member.
Having been elected to the office of council member.
In the city of Evanston, in the county of Cook, aforesaid.
In the city of Evanston, in the county of Cook, aforesaid.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of council member to the best of my abilities.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of council member to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations, council member. Are you ready?
Sure.
Would you raise your right hand, please? I, Eleanor Revell.
I, Eleanor Revell.
Having been elected to the office of council member.
Having been elected to the office of council member.
In the city of Evanston, in the county of Cook, aforesaid.
In the city of Evanston, in the county of Cook, aforesaid.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of council member to the best of my abilities.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of council member to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations, council member. A vichy. Ready?
Yes.
Please raise your right hand. I, Devon Malcolm Reed.
I, Devon Malcolm Reed.
Having been elected to the office of council member.
Having been elected to the office of council member.
In the city of Evanston, in the county of Cook, aforesaid.
In the city of Evanston, in the county of Cook, aforesaid.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of council member to the best of my abilities.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of council member to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations, council member.
Thank you, sir.
I, Cicely L. Fleming.
I, Cicely L. Fleming.
Having been elected to the office of council member.
Having been elected to the office of council member.
In the city of Evanston, in the county of Cook, aforesaid.
In the city of Evanston, in the county of Cook, aforesaid.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of council member to the best of my abilities.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of council member to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations, council member.
Thank you.
Are you ready? Would you please raise your right hand? I, Stephanie Mendoza.
I, Stephanie Mendoza.
Having been elected to the office of city clerk.
Having been elected to the office of city clerk.
In the city of Evanston, in the county of Cook, aforesaid.
In the city of Evanston, in the county of Cook, aforesaid.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of city clerk to the best of my abilities.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of city clerk to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations, clerk. I've been asked if all the council members could come here for a single picture together before we begin the meeting. Oh, what's that? Oh, that, there, so that I know. On the back wall. Well, good evening. We now move on to what will be the relatively brief formal part of the meeting. I want to remind everyone, you have to turn on your mic by pushing the button, and it should be working when the light is green in front of you, which I figured out on like the fourth try over here. So I'd like to begin by asking the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Kelly?
Here.
Councilmember Braithwaite?
Here.
Councilmember Wayne?
Here.
Councilmember Nusma?
Here.
Councilmember Burns?
Here.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Here.
Councilmember Revell?
Here.
Councilmember Reed?
Here.
Councilmember Fleming?
Here.
So quorum is present, so as I understand, what we are doing is resuming the previously recessed meeting of council. So we have a quorum to do so. And unless there is any motion by a member of council to the contrary, I believe we can go directly to... Is that council member... So I've seen, I believe no motion to the contrary, I believe we can go directly to call of the wards. So if we could begin with Councilmember Kelly from the first ward.
Good evening. I'd like to start by thanking my wonderful campaign team that worked tirelessly and enthusiastically, ensuring our work remained uplifting and enjoyable throughout, even when it got very challenging at times and exhausting. And my family members, my brothers, Mike and Max, who generously provided their amazing artistic expertise and love, and my sons, Nico and Gus, and extended family, and many close friends who jumped in in so many ways to support this campaign. This campaign was a community and team effort in the best and truest sense. A cross-section of Evanston and the First Ward came together to push us across the finish line. The inclusivity and diversity of the campaign really deepened my commitment to serving the needs and interests of all First Ward residents, and indeed, all Evanstonians. I am so thankful to the many supporters from all ages and walks of life and community organizations who created a beautiful energy and synergy for this campaign. We intend to keep that collective power alive and vibrant going forward to support the important work that lies ahead. Not entirely related to the campaign itself, but I want to take a moment to express my deep appreciation for the hard work and perseverance of our city employees and all essential workers in Evanston during these trying times. As a teacher of 30 years at Evanston Township High School and a longtime union member, active at the local, state, and national levels, I am proud to be a strong voice on this city council. I'd also like to tip my hat to Evanston women. So many women came forward to support me during this campaign. Your encouragement, your solidarity, your voices mean the world to me. Evanston has such a rich history filled with so many bright, passionate, and strong women committed to improving our city, to improving our world. I'd like to acknowledge right now three of those strong, passionate, brilliant women. They're here in the audience this evening. I've learned from them. I've gained strength from them. I've laughed with them. Their work and commitment to improve Evanston and to create a more inclusive Evanston began before their campaigns for aldermen, and I know will continue long after. Darlene Cannon. Mary Rosinski. And Diane Goldring. And Diane Goldring. Thank you each of you for your leadership, your strength, and your commitment to making Evanston better. I look forward to continuing our work together. Of course, I want to thank my colleagues here on the dais for your commitment to Evanston. We have a tough, tough job ahead of us, often maybe thankless, but I know that we together will accomplish great things in Evanston. And most of all, I am humbled and grateful to my neighbors in the first ward who put their trust in me to represent their voices in defining Evanston's values, priorities, and investments and future. With that, I'd like to end by referring to the AP&amp;W committee and to the city staff for their consideration the establishment of a separate fund to account for the receipt and disbursement of funds received under the American Rescue Plan Act. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Braithwaite.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I first like to start out by thanking my family and close friends and church members just for all your support over the years, my beautiful wife Claudia, son Peter that are here, Maya who's watching from home, Isaiah, my son who's way at school, as well as our daughter Brittany, and also my mother. I'm excited, I'm excited about our, our future and the opportunities ahead. I'm looking forward to building off the success of our 80th council led by Mayor Steve Hagerty. I've learned so many lessons along the way. And if anything, and I shared a few of these comments earlier, the art of listening is key. And even with our most, and I'm sure there will be disagreements to come, it's, it's remembering that although we are elected by our wards, we serve one town. And I couldn't think of a better town to serve in. And I hope that when those disagreements do come up, and I'm sure they will, we can always look deep inside and remember why we were elected and who we were elected to serve. So with that said, it's going to be a great four years. And buckle up, now's when the work begins. Thank you.
Councilmember Wayne.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First and foremost, I want to thank my family. My husband, who is the best campaign manager, a new skill he acquired in the last, for, last eight months. And my daughter Caroline, who is my steadfast supporter, and my son Matthew, who is support from afar. And all of my friends and family around the United States, and in particular here in Evanston. And then second, of course, I want to thank the voters of the third ward who have given me the honor and privilege again of serving not just them, but the entire city of Evanston. The last four years have been interesting, unlike any we've ever had before. I think the next four years will be another interesting, challenging four years that we've never seen before. And there are going to be some big changes in Evanston. It's going to be a real, a lot of challenges. We have the talent and energy to meet those challenges with our wonderful city staff, our terrific city manager, and my old and new colleagues on the city council. I look forward to working with each and every one of you as we move Evanston forward. Thank you.
Councilmember Newsma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to begin by thanking the residents of the fourth ward for placing their trust and confidence in me to act as your representative on the city council. I look forward to getting to know those of you whom I haven't already met. And I look forward to hearing your voices, I want to hear your concerns. I want to hear your grievances, and I also want to hear your good ideas. I think we, on this side of the dais, have our fair share of good ideas, but certainly we have no monopoly on good ideas. So I, I look forward to working with the residents of the fourth ward to make our community an even better place to live, more equitable, and more environmentally sustainable, and more economically thriving. I'd also like to thank my campaign team and volunteers for all their hard work. This includes my family. Thank you, Graham and Greta, my kids, for putting up with their dad being away so many times. I'm sorry it's going to have to continue on, on Monday nights for the next four years at least. I'd like to thank my mom and dad, and mom, my mom Merrily, my dad Milt, and my father-in-law Art for their help knocking on doors and putting stickers on postcards and making some phone calls. And certainly my wife, Chris. And I'm going to just move on from there. I'd also like to thank outgoing Alderman Don Wilson for his 12 years of service to our community and for his support during this transition. Alderman Wilson, our council, can we call him Alderman? Because he was an Alderman. Warn me that this can be a thankless job, so I just want to make sure that he's leaving office feeling appreciated and that his time has been worth it. So on behalf of the residents of the fourth ward, thank you, councilmember Wilson, for your service. To my colleagues on the city council, including the mayor and, and the city clerk, it's an honor to join you on this side of the dais. I still don't know what it looks like behind that one, because this one is new. So there are some buttons I think we get to push at some point, right? But we'll get trained on that, I'm sure. For those of you who are returning, thank you for your past service. And for those joining me as, in the freshman class, thank you for your service in advance. I look forward to working with you. I hope we can reach consensus on a lot of things, maybe most things. But I certainly expect that in the spirit of honoring our constituencies and working to support the differing needs and priorities within our community, that there will be times when we disagree. I hope there are times when we disagree. And when that does occur, I, I look forward to doing that respectfully and graciously. And as councilmember Braithwaite mentioned, remembering the reason that we've been elected to office. So to the city manager Storey and other city staff, you're the professionals that we rely on to keep the city running. Also want to make sure you are thanked and acknowledged for the hard work that you've done. Thank you for your service. I look forward to working with you to implement the vision of this new city council. So enough with the thank yous, a couple of small items of business. I would like to announce our next ward meeting. I look forward to having ward meetings. At this point, we're going to plan on the first Tuesdays of every month at seven o'clock. We will do the first one, that will be June 1st, at the Robert Crown Center. And I will also have office hours on the second Saturday of each month. The first one will be 10:00 AM at Berry Pike Cafe, the coffee shop, 1100 Davis, across from the post office. Thank you.
Councilmember Burns.
First and foremost, just wanted to say thank you to the voters of the fifth ward. I met many of you during a blizzard, I went out and knocked on every door in the ward. You know, sometimes the snow was above my knee and you looked at me like I was crazy. And I remember some people saying, "Look, you got my vote, just get out of the snow." I appreciate you. But it was really important for me, you know, safely through COVID to meet folks face-to-face and let them know, "I really want to earn your vote. I don't take any of this for granted, and I don't expect anything from anyone. I want to earn it." And I want you to be able to take a look at me, ask me questions, get a sense of what I stand for and what I would like to do, and, and, and the way I'll approach the work, and, and make a vote because, because you feel good about it. So I, I'm truly thankful for you entrusting this, this great responsibility. And, and I promise I will continue earning it for the next four years. Want to thank my family and my friends and everyone, many, some of who are in the back now, my sister Tamara, my mother Martha Burns, my son Amari, Cora was here, Xerxes was here, my uncle Reggie is here, Noella is here. Thank you so much to everyone, my wife Krista. Thank you so much for supporting me, both in this campaign, but just in life. And want to thank Alderman Simmons and Alderman Holmes. Two truly great women who have led this ward courageously and with so much grace and poise, and have done a great job. And I went to these doors and there, they hold a lot of weight in this ward. Some people would just say, "Look, you got my vote if you're, you know, if they vetted you, if they're behind you, I'm supporting you." And so I know although I earned some votes, there was some that they earned and that I benefited from. So I want to say thank you so much to them. Check my notes. You know, we talk a lot as far as racial equity, equity, social equity has been a big conversation in Evanston. And one of the lived experiences I want to call attention to that we now have on the council is, you know, my good friend Devon, you know, I'm a, we both have some college, but I'm a Knight High School graduate. He is a, a GED guy. And that means something, because no matter what course you take in life, your path can lead to people seeing you as valuable, whether you have degrees or paperwork or not. And I think everybody that knows us know that we'll always be prepared, that we understand the, the working of this city government, that we understand the issues, that we're scholars, that we're, we're, we're going to do the research and be prepared to represent our ward with dignity in the way it should. And I'm so excited that we both come with that experience. Also renters, which is also, I'd like to see more renters even on our boards, committees, and commissions that have to do with housing, right? If we're talking about affordable housing, we probably should have some people on there that are, that are renters, that are housing insecure. Lived experience is just as important as credentialed experience. So I want to call attention to that. And also want to call attention to the fact that, to the parents in the audience at home, that your children are watching. So when I told people that I was running, my, my mother was probably the one that was the most shocked at, at everybody. And she, she, you know, you probably would have thought she knew it was coming. She served this, this city, District 202 as a, as a board member and serves as a trustee on Oakton. And she didn't, never thought that, that I was going to choose this as a path. But I want the parents to know that your children are watching. We're looking at, at you to help us figure out what it means to, to seek and, and obtain a fulfilling life, to know what we should do with our time and, and, and how we can make the most out of this, this life and the time we have in it. And so we're watching. And so I want everybody to understand that as parents. And then the last thing is just back to the ward. Although we may not, you know, we may not always agree on every issue, the, what I can promise is that, I'm, and I said this many times during the campaigns, I don't, campaign, I don't have all the ideas. If I have any superpower, it's that I understand how to get things done through the legislative process. But governing is kind of a collective exercise. And just know if you have any ideas and concerns, that, that, that they will always be welcomed. And there's a meeting, I think, scheduled on the city calendar for Wednesday. I think at 7:00 PM, we do not have a ward meeting this Wednesday. I will be communicating soon about the next ward meeting. But again, thank you so much. Thank you to everyone up here, to the, to the former council, as well as the former mayor. Thank you so much for your service.
Councilmember Sufferton.
Thank you, sir. I'm rusty on in-person meetings, didn't even occur to me that we were going to be making speeches. And so four years of following Bobby Burns at Call of the Wards is going to sharpen my game. I would like to thank my family, my children are watching from right there. So I'd like to say hi to Josephine, Patrick, Will, and Emma, and my wife Claire. I'd like to thank you guys for your support during the campaign. I'd like to thank my parents, Larry and Gloria, who are not here, and my in-laws, Larry and Mary, who are also not here, but are six ward residents. And I'm very appreciative of their help and support. Bobby, at the last inauguration, or whatever this is, I was the one holding the baby, it goes really fast, you know that. And so it's, it's really important that we take our work very seriously. I was Googling Cicero quotes during the downtime after Claire went, and I realized that, that we were all going to be making speeches. And one of the ones that popped up more than three times, I'm going to assume that it is authentic, is that "Any man can make mistakes, but only an idiot persists in error." And that's our call these next four years, to take what Evanston has done well in the past and magnify it, take what we've done poorly and fix it, and take what's unnecessary and discard it. And I'm really excited to get to work with all of you and, and get this done. And I think the Athenian oath is a little bit pompous, but it's important. So let's, let's make sure that we do that over the next four years. And Mayor Bis, I'm looking forward to working with you. Thank you, everybody.
Councilmember Ravel.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I'd obviously like to start by thanking my husband, who's been stalwart support for me these past four years. He's my tech support and all-around general staff person and just really an aide to me in everything. And I want to thank my, the people who worked so hard on my campaign and kept me encouraged and in good spirits and helped me get through what was a pretty long and, and challenging event for all of us, I think. I want to thank the, the voters of the seventh ward for entrusting me again with four more years to represent you on the city council. I look forward to working with you, to hearing your ideas, and to representing you, being as responsive as I can to your concerns and the issues that you want to see us address here on the council. And I'm really looking forward to working with our new council. I look forward to the new ideas that my new colleagues bring and the new energies. I think it, we can always benefit from having an influx of new ideas to help us come up with some oftentimes better ways to, to do our job. So I'm really looking forward to working with all of you. I look forward to continuing to work with our wonderful staff and our city manager. And I'm, I'm just, we have a lot of challenges ahead of us, but I, I have great confidence in our ability to come together and come up with the right solutions to move us forward. Thank you.
Councilmember Reed.
Thank you, Mayor Bis. I did not prepare a statement for tonight, but I will speak from the heart. And what a last, what, what an amazing last four years we have had. Challenging four, last four years with COVID and a renewed discussion around the racial injustices that we are facing in this nation. And I am honored to have been a part of that as clerk. And so first I will say to Clerk Mendoza, you have my support in whatever you need to be as successful as you possibly can be. I would first like to say thank you to my mother, Raquel Reed, who, who birthed me into this world. But, you know, also was, just, you're, you're one of my best, you're my best friend now. We have conversations all the time, and we've grown so close. Many of you have heard some of the struggles that I've had, you know, in my childhood and throughout my life. And for, for parents, you know, know that the, you know, the mistakes or missteps that you make do not have to impact the lives of your children. Your children can go on to create great things in this world. So, so hold that close, parents. I want to speak to, and I want to say thank you to folks in the community who were extremely supportive over the last four years. I couldn't have made it through this term without you. Malika, Ally, Claire, who's now on the dais here, Tricia, so, so many folks out there who were extremely supportive. And so forgive me if I didn't say your name, but I'm, I'm thinking of you now. Claire. In me, you have an undying partner, an unrelenting partner in working for transparency and good government. Alderman Braithwaite. Economic development. I'm right there with you. And I want to make sure that we're ensuring that our black and brown businesses are receiving all the support they need to ensure that, to, to be successful and thrive. You have a partner in me with that. Alderman Wayne. The missing middle. I think that's something I've heard you talk about in affordable housing. You have a partner with me in solving the housing crisis, particularly around the missing middle. Alderman Newsma, councilmember Newsma. Environmental issues. You have a partner in me in making sure that Evanston is living up to our green and commitment here in our city. Brethren. Bobby Burns, you have a partner in me in doing whatever the heck we need to do. Bobby Burns, you have a partner in me in doing whatever the heck we need to do to make sure the fifth ward is coming out better than it ever has been. And we stand on the shoulders of giants with Alderman Ruse Simmons and Alderman Holmes. And you have my support in strengthening the fifth ward. Manager Storey, everything. We have to work together on everything because you're the city manager. And what you have for me is someone who will support you in your position to make sure you have everything you need to be the most successful city manager this city has had. And to make sure that you have a fair shot. Because I am inspired by your story. While, you know, we have different, I think we need to adjust how the position is chosen, but you are an amazing person. You started here in this city over a decade ago in IT department and rose through the ranks as a woman to become the city manager of Evanston. That is an amazing story. You're someone who went to college, to night school, if I'm not mistaken, to get your degree. You are an amazing person and you have someone who will support you in your position with me. Mayor Bis, it is an honor to serve with you. You are one of the most brilliant people I've ever had the, the, the good fortune to be in, in, in the presence of. And so I am honored to, to be serving with you and to tackle the issues of policing in our city and to really create a model for our nation. Stephanie, I told you, you got anything you need from me. Alderman Sufferton. You know, I wouldn't, I can't call you quiet, but, you know, somewhat quietly, you are one of the most brilliant people in this, in any room that you walk into. This guy, yeah, certainly he is. But, but you're, you're up there too. And I really appreciate how laser focused you are on, on policy and how you hold us, hold our feet to the fire. And I hope to, to, to be a partner in, in, in making the city more like Cicero, the great man who... That's an inside joke for the folks who follow the election. Alderman Revelle, again, affordable housing, environmental issues, you have a partner in me in working to advance those issues in our city. Alderman Fleming, you have been a stalwart defender of equity and ensuring that our city is approaching every aspect of our operations through an equitable lens. And you have a partner in me in making sure that we continue to do that. Thank you for your, your work. To my residents, to the residents of the eighth ward, I shouldn't say my residents, to, to the residents who put me in this position. As I told many of you on the campaign, I am not your hero. I am not the person who's going to make things happen for you. I want to be, you know, Batman's, he had Albert or whatever the guy's name was. I'm, I'm looking to be the sidekick, to be your partner in making sure you are the hero of your own story, to ensure that you have the tools to create the community that you would like to see. And that is the role that I plan to play for you. So with that, I, I do want to introduce one bit of, two bits of business to begin on the path of making our city the most livable city in America, and dare I say the world. I, I would like to place as a special order of business on the agenda for the 24th, a resolution or ordinance that would open the beaches to Evanston residents. And I think we can work with city staff and, and our colleagues to ensure that that can happen. And we can use the reserve funds. We have over $2 million. And I'm sorry, not reserve, surplus funds. Surplus funds, we have $2 million in surplus from, from 2020. And we can use a portion of that to make the beaches accessible to Evanston resident this summer and end the racist policy of exclusionary and dare I say racist policy of charging for beach access. So I make a motion to place that on the agenda as a special order of business for the 24th. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
So Councilmember Reed has moved to place the special order of business on the agenda, and Councilmember Kelly has seconded. I will... Well, is there any discussion? Councilmember Fleming.
Yeah, I think, Councilmember Reed, I think you want to say complimentary. You did not mention that part. They're already, they're already available.
Yes, I am sorry. Make the free complimentary beach tokens to every Evanston resident, if I wasn't clear on that. Thank you for that clarification.
Can I make an inquiry of the clerk, who's only been the clerk for as long as I've been the mayor? Sorry. So does, does the, does, does the placement of a special order of business on the agenda by a council member require a motion and a vote of the full council?
Yes.
Great. So now that Councilmember Fleming has updated the motion, is there any further discussion on this matter?
So I just wanted to interject.
Go ahead.
Our corporation counsel is present through the Zoom meeting, but I didn't anticipate we were going to have motions being made. So we need to turn the screen on so we can have him opine. But his, he's telling me that because this matter wasn't on the agenda, we can't discuss it.
So he's saying that the motion is an order, but there's no discussion that we can hold about it. We just vote and move on? Because it certainly is an order for a council member to, during Call of the Wards, places, enumerate a special order of business. That, that much I do remember. It's, it's everything else that I don't.
Well, it's, it's appropriate to make a referral. I have to check the rules on whether it's appropriate to make a special order of business. I can't speak to that off the top of my head. But maybe our previous corporation counsel is here and could opine on that. But I don't see her.
I don't see her either. Oh, there she is.
Previous clerk is fine to opine.
Yeah, go ahead.
Members of the city council, Mayor Bis, Clerk Mendoza, City Manager Storey, Kelly Gandersky, former Corporation Counsel, now Deputy City Manager. As I recall from the rules, a referral can be made for, to put on the next city council agenda or committee as proper. Since the meeting was already noticed, putting a special order of business now and voting and discussing could be a violation of the open meetings.
I'm sorry, I'm out of date. Councilmember Reed was not calling for a vote on the item. He was calling to place the special order of business on the next agenda.
Yes, that's proper.
But would require a vote.
It would require, no, he could just make the referral.
That's what I...
It would require a vote to place a special order of business.
It's a special order. Yes. Yes, that is correct. I apologize. So yes, is a referral for a special order of business at the next council?
Yeah, exactly.
It cannot be voted and discussed tonight, obviously.
Understood. But is the motion under consideration, which is the motion to put the thing on the next agenda, open for discussion?
There was a motion made.
The motion was made and seconded.
Seconded. Okay, yes, there can be discussion and then voted to be placed on the next city council agenda.
Great. Thank you for your help. And this has been an awesome civics lesson. Is there any discussion on the motion before us, which again, is a motion to place the special order of business on the May 24th agenda?
Clerk Reed, I know this is something that, thank you, Mayor Bis, that we have discussed previously. And I, I think we would have to do one of two things, Clerk Reed. Obviously, any financial decision that we discuss will require data and information. So I don't know if it would make sense to refer it to a committee just to gather some additional data, or you would have to be really clear with our staff to bring something back so quickly that would have a financial impact on our future, our future budget. So I understand the nature and the reason why. But I, I think for us to all have a healthy dialogue, to me, your ideas has value, but the portion that you would take from the existing budget, I don't know if we could make that change so quickly. So I think it deserves a good, healthy conversation. And my advice to consider is sending it through a committee so we can at least get the data and statistics to understand the down-the-road impact of, of any vote that we would make on that topic.
Yes. If, Councilmember Reed?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I will note that beach tokens are currently being sold. I think this should be a pilot program for this year to test out, you know, so I should have noted also that it's a pilot program for this year. The financial impact, we know at most, Manager Storey, I've had conversations with you, and that roughly total beach revenue is about $800,000. I don't, that's, that's including all beach revenue, not just beach tokens for Evanston residents. So the dollar amount would be less. But I think we can have all of that data prepared for the 24th by city staff. And we can certainly have a thorough examination of it then.
Councilmember Newsma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will request part two of the civics lesson, if that's okay. As a special order of business going to the next meeting, what does that entail? And I recall from watching the previous meeting earlier this evening, that a special order of business cannot be held. So does that mean that it's all or nothing next time? I'll also add that I'm supportive of, of the objective here. I would love to do away with beach tokens and allow all Evanston residents equal and free access to the beach. Want to make sure we do that judiciously.
My understanding is the answer to that question is yes, that the ordinary mechanism to hold an item awaiting action is ineligible in the instance of special orders of business.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Reed.
Thank you. I would also like to note that items, special order of business, items that are designated as a special order of business can be held. It's just a different threshold for holding. So there's still the possibility, and I'm happy to be a part of holding it. If it's not ready and we don't have all the information, I'm happy to, to hold it then. But I, I believe in our city staff and I think we can have a strong proposal that's ready to make a beach access open this year to every single Evanston resident.
So my understanding is that the corporation counsel wants to weigh in by phone. Is that still the case? So how are we going to do that? Hold on, we're going to try a little experiment here.
All right, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Bis and Councilmembers of the 81st City Council, Corporation Counsel Nicholas Cummings. I just want to point out that the motion itself is out of order at this time. The item can be discussed, but it was not on the agenda. So no business can move forward on that particular piece of action. The clerk, I'm sorry, Councilmember Reed is correct that Rule 1811 does require a vote for a special order of business that is referred by a council member. But during Call of the Ward, you can make references to committees like Councilmember Kelly did. But to call a vote on something that is not on the agenda would be improper.
I'm not sure I under... Let me, let me ask this, council. What is, clearly the, a member of council has the authority to take an action to place a special order of business on the agenda. What is the appropriate mechanism by which to exercise that authority?
Just a second, just a second. I'm just going to interrupt for just a second. The mayor has the ability to put this in special order of business, as does the city manager. And in the spirit of this being our first meeting and council members not having the benefit of the training that we're having this coming weekend and next weekend, I'm just going to agree to place this on the agenda as a special order of business and we can move on.
Point of order.
Councilmember Reed.
I, I apologize. I think that, yes, it has been the past practice that the mayor and the city manager place items of special orders of business on the agenda. But nowhere in the council rules doesn't say that the mayor or the city manager has that authority. The only mechanism in the rules, Rule 18.11 and 18.12, the only mechanism is by majority vote of the council. And we just haven't done that in the past, but I'm hoping to follow Cicero.
May I ask a clarifying question?
Councilmember Fleming?
So there's these lights, Mayor Bis. I don't know if they're working or not. Sometimes they work, sometimes they don't. But I'll try to...
Oh, yeah, look, there's a light. It's next to your name.
I'll try to put those on so I don't have to wave. With the special order of business, does it have to go on for introduction and action? Or can it be introduction as special order of business? So we can put this on an introduction. We can have, start the conversation. If the material is not detailed enough, we can, we don't have to do introduction and action on the 24th. So that meets, I think, Alderman Braithwaite's concern of moving too fast. And if we can vote on it tonight, we can put it on the agenda and then move from there still with enough time to make a good decision. Are you not, are you asking for, you're asking just to be on the agenda, no introduction and action?
At this point, I'm not asking to spin the rules. I think we can...
I think we can have the vote just to get it on the agenda on the 24th for an introduction. Seems to be.
The rules, the rules of city council were amended and 1811 allows them to be placed on, by the city manager, the mayor, or a member of city council. It just requires five days' notice. It does not necessarily require a vote anymore.
Well, but I would imagine that you said mayor, manager, or city council, and for the city council to act requires a vote, correct?
According to the rule, it does not require a vote. It just requires five days' prior notice to the city council by, by electronic mail.
Right. But what does it mean for the city council to place a special order of business on the agenda if not through the action of voting on a motion at some point? Surely that's the way the city council acts.
That is correct. It will be voted on at some point. However, the rules that were amended do not require a vote for it to go on as a special order of business. It just needs to be referred by the council member within five days' notice.
By any council member unilaterally. Let me do so. I see.
Yes.
Okay, that's very clear. Thank you. So what I'm hearing, councilmember, is that you have the authority without a second and without a vote to simply put a special order of business on the agenda, not only now, but you could do so nine days from now, as long as it's five days or more before, before the 24th. Is that, you're still disputing that characterization of the rules, councilmember?
I dispute that. But for the sake of time, I guess it's still going to be on the agenda as a special order of business. I would, I would request a vote on it because I think that's proper procedure.
You do need a vote, though. Sorry.
I'm sorry, who just said that?
Clerk Mendoza said something.
Oh, okay.
We do need to, as I read it, we do need to take a vote.
Yes. Thank you, Clerk Mendoza.
Well, if, I'm not a council member, but if somebody, you know, whose ward number is eight or higher wants to refer to the Rules Committee going over the special order of business procedures, that might not be a bad idea. But I'm happy to call the vote, if that's your preference. I'm also happy to let the city manager place it on the agenda as a special order of business. It doesn't really matter to me how we do it. I think we're going to get there. What's your, do you have a preference?
I think we should call the vote.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, clerk, could you please call the roll? And just to recapitulate, this is a motion to place a special order of business on the May 24th agenda to make beach access free.
For all Evanston residents.
For introduction, not introduction and action. For introduction. Thank you.
So I have Councilmember Kelly as a second. So would you, Councilmember Kelly?
Yes.
Yes. Councilmember Braithwaite?
Yes.
Councilmember Wen?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Yes.
Councilmember Revelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming?
Aye.
So in a vote of nine to zero, the motion passes. And through any number of means, we can now, we now have confidence that this item will be on the agenda on May 24th. And all, all kidding aside, I intend to make sure that on the Rules Committee agenda for earlier that same day, we not only clarify, but also perhaps revisit these, this question because it's, it's an important procedural item with obviously a lot of, a lot of different interpretations of the current reality. Are you still?
I have one last thing. Yes. Thank you for our first real council meeting and debate here. Next, I want to move one more order... Next, I want to move one more order of, one more motion to place an ordinance that will be drafted by city staff on the 20, the agenda for the 24th. And I'll just very quickly read the preamble. Whereas the novel coronavirus 19, COVID-19, coronavirus 19, COVID-19 disease is caused by a virus that spreads easily from person to person and may result in serious illness or death, and is classified by the World Health Organization as a worldwide pandemic, and whereas the COVID-19 pandemic has led to the current state of emergency in Illinois, and where, whereas on March 20th, 2020, Governor Pritzker issued an executive order requiring shelter in place for all nonessential workers in response to the COVID-19 emergency declaration, and whereas COVID-19 has broadly spread throughout Illinois and remains a significant health risk to the community, especially members of our most vulnerable populations, and whereas the virus continues to spread rapidly across our region, with clusters arising in retail stores, grocery stores, and household supply stores, and those stores remain critical pieces of infrastructure in our fight against COVID-19 and protecting, as well as protecting the food supply chain. And whereas large retailers with 500-plus employees nationally are the primary points of distribution for food and other daily necessities for residents of the city of Evanston, and are therefore essential to the vitality of our community, and whereas the Brookings Metropolitan Policy Program has reported that the United States' top retail companies have earned record-breaking profits during the pandemic, and whereas establishing a requirement for grocery and home goods, employees to receive hazard pay for work performed in Evanston during the COVID-19 emergency will promote job retention, compensate them for the risk of working on the front lines of a global pandemic, and improve their financial ability to access resources for protecting themselves and their families from catching or spreading the virus, or coping with illness caused by the virus, and support the welfare of the greater community that depends on these essential workers for safe, reliable access to food, medicine, and household goods. And whereas to protect the food supply chain and the public health and safety, the city of Evanston must take steps to guard against the turnover and ensure, against turnover, and ensure that large essential supply stores in Evanston have well-trained, consistent, and stable staffing. And whereas essential employees have been supporting business operations and facilitating community access to food during the pandemic despite facing a clear and present danger of workplace exposure to COVID-19 and receiving limited or inconsistent additional pay in recognition of this hazard, and whereas the dangers of working during the pandemic are especially significant in the Black, for Black, Indigenous, and people of color, employees who are overrepresented amongst retail frontline workers, and who are disproportionately impacted by COVID-19, and whereas recognizing the ongoing threat to, to these employees, Seattle, Washington, several cities in California, including Berkeley, Long Beach, Los Angeles, Oakland, San Francisco, as well as Los Angeles County, have announced legislative efforts to require hazard pay of $4 to $5 per hour for grocery employees during the COVID-19 emergency, and more cities are expected to announce similar legislation. And whereas the city of Evanston continuously strives to be the most livable city in America, and whereas establishing a labor standard that requires hazard pay for grocery employees and household good employees, who is subject to the vital and imminent concern to the community and requires appropriate action by the city council now, I move a motion that we place a hazard pay bill on the agenda. I have a draft that I will submit to the clerk's office, and I would like to see that on the agenda for the 24th as well as a special order of business. So I move that as well.
Before entertaining a second, I have two items. First of all, point of clarification, are you requesting that, is the motion that this item be placed on the agenda for introduction or for introduction and action?
For introduction.
Oh, great. And second, just, as a guy who's been the mayor for half an hour and never went to law school, my reading of the rules is consistent with the notion that this vote is required, as the clerk indicated, that one member of council cannot by themselves place a special order of business on the agenda, but instead can only do so with agreement of the majority of the council. And so I think, I think, rather than you putting this item on unilaterally, making this motion strikes me as the correct approach. Is there a second for the motion?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Burns. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, would you?
I'm sorry.
I'm so sorry, I'm really bad at this. Councilmember Winn?
Well, I appreciate very much Clerk Alderman.
I should change my first name to Clerk.
I know. Councilperson Reed ideas about this. I believe that we do have a process, a city council process, for, for taking on a significant and important issue like this, and rather than use the special order of business process, which is truly used for special orders of business, as we have done in the past. But this is something that requires a thorough community discussion, where we bring in all of the interests to have, which is what's a really important discussion about fair wages. And so rather than use the special order of business method, I would suggest that this be referred to a committee and go through the regular process of developing discussion, bringing in stakeholders, and having the, the draft ordinance reviewed by the legal staff, and so that the council has an opportunity to talk about this among ourselves, and deliberate, and hear from our constituents. Putting something on as a special order of business is usually something that we've had a lot of discussion about, or we're putting it on as a special topic. This is clearly a significant issue that is important, that it should go through our committee process. So I won't support it as a special order of business. I would support it if it would go through the regular process.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Reed?
I agree. Mr. Mayor, I will agree with my colleague that I think this, I wish that we could have had a longer discussion of this issue, and I wish I could have made this motion sooner. But this is the soonest that I could have made it, and we have certainly, you know, this has been around for the last year. I think we're, we have to do right by these employees and act now and act swiftly. And what I plan to do is, thank you Alderman Sufferton for helping me get in touch with, with the UFCW, so I plan to invite representatives from the Food Workers Union, representatives from the Merchant Retailers Association, and any, you know, renowned economists that I can find that will also be willing to come and provide testimony on this issue. We will certainly have plenty of time for discussion, as note that this is going on the agenda for introduction. I believe, you know, we'll have thorough discussion, and, you know, this is an emergency. We have placed orders of business on the agenda, you know, we had a special order of business that was placed on the agenda a few years ago regarding FOIA, and there wasn't a thorough discussion before, because sometimes the council feels the need to act immediately, and I can't see a better reason to act immediately than to ensure that the folks who've been putting their lives on the line, for us to ensure that we can have food and access to resources, I can see no better reason to place an item on the agenda as a special order of business than that. So I.
Mr. Mayor, may I respond?
Councilmember Winn?
Yes. Councilperson Reed, there are many, many issues that are the first order of emergency, and I, and I agree with you on that. But we have a process, and, and that process involves procedure and allowing everyone in the community to participate. Having, you know that, having a special order of business at a city council is a very foreshortened process. It's not the same as having a thorough discussion at a committee, where the staff has been able to do more research and bring in, and bring us all up to speed on this issue. I agree, our essential workers are not paid enough. But I can't support something that, that to me is a rushed process. I believe in the procedures that we have here at the city, and I believe that we have produced good legislation in the past, and I'm happy to discuss this issue, but I will not support legislation by special order of business on all of these topics. Let's use, let's, let's use our committee system, let's bring in all the stakeholders, let's have a discussion with the community on this issue, and then let's vote.
Councilmember Winn, I apologize for cutting you off, that was my mistake. Councilmember Braithwaite?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, supportive of the, the cause, and at the top of the meeting, you acknowledged me, and you said you wanted to work with me in terms of economic development. And so, as you know, with the second ward being the most racially and economically diverse ward, the footprints of at least the assets that I'm responsible for, downtown Evanston, shopping center at Dempster Plaza, Main Street, the industrial area, and I want to bring us back to, and this was a vote some time ago when we were just discussing the minimum wage and, and moving just a couple of dollars. And the issue that we ran into, Clerk Reed, was that when we rushed that process, it did create a lot of confusion with both the business community, and I can't remember all the details, but I would respectfully ask, as someone who works very closely with my business community, that I'm going to need some time to have a discussion with my business owners, because our decisions have an impact. And if, if, what everyone ran on in terms of being progressive, being transparent, I think the ideas are wonderful and bold, but I use the difference between governing and activism, and I think with governing, I've learned over the years to be very mindful of all of our stakeholders, as well as being responsible and mindful of the thoughts and opinions of my council members that I serve with. And so in this situation, I would share with you, we have a job, a job fair, June 7th, just coming with downtown Evanston. We don't even have enough workers to open up our restaurants for the summer, and it would be really irresponsible for me to even vote on something that would increase the salaries when we don't even have workers to open our downtown restaurants. And that's not anecdotal, that's a real conversation that myself, a few other members of council we've had with Annie Cokely, we've, there are at least 23 restaurants right now that will not be able to open their doors. And I think to move forward with an action that would increase wages, and, you know, I could spin this both ways, well, what a better way to get more workers than a wage races. But again, I want to be diligent with our, with our communication. I think there's nothing, again, starting that conversation by making a referral is but one avenue to get us there. But if transparency is, is a word that we all discussed over the last four months, I think it'd be really prudent that, I would like an opportunity to have conversations with my, with my business districts before I could even take action on something like this. And I would hope that other members of council who support all businesses around Evanston as we all live here would, would honor that request that I'm making. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Let's, let's make sure that everyone's had a chance to speak at least once before we call in someone a second time. Also, also a rule. Councilmember Newsma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Reed, this is a big idea, it's a bold idea, and I support the concept, but I share the concerns of Councilmember Winn and Councilmember Braithwaite, that such a bold idea needs to be deliberated, and stakeholders need to be engaged in this decision, and I would not want to risk the long-term viability of this idea by, by foreshortening the process. So that's where I'm at on this issue.
Councilmember Reed?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do want to clarify for some of my colleagues that this would not affect restaurant workers. I have a draft that can be presented to everyone, and as I read in the preamble there, this is for large corporation, large corporate partners and large corporate retailers such as Target. This is specifically drafted, the language to impact Target, Jewel, Whole Foods, CVS, Walgreens, the larger retailers, which, as I mentioned in the preamble there, that the Brookings Policy Institute has showed that those corporations have had record-breaking profits during the pandemic, and in many cases, those profits have not been shared with employees. I, in fact, think that this would be a great bill for our local restaurants, because if our food service employees that work at grocery stores have extra money in their pocket, they may frequent our local restaurants. And I would say you're absolutely, my colleague is absolutely correct in stating that it is likely that the reason we're having an issue retaining food service workers at restaurants is, you know, we've seen plenty of reports that show that, you know, you know, those workers are terribly underpaid, and in fact, unemployment is paying folks more than going to work. And so if we, we don't want the same situation to occur in our grocery stores, we need to protect the food supply chain, and I think that's, you know, what's written into this ordinance, to ensure that we have workers at our grocery stores and at these critically important places. And, and I think, you know, as the COVID rescue plan money comes in, I certainly think we can allocate some of those dollars toward our restaurants to ensuring that they have, you know, the proper resources to pay their employees, because restaurants did not see record-breaking profits, such as our, you know, Kroger, which is in your ward, Jewel, Target, record-breaking profits there, and I think that we should ensure that those profits are shared amongst the employees.
Councilmember Winn?
Once again, this, clearly, this is a significant topic. We obviously need, we depend on Target, Jewel, these large big-box retailers have, we can debate their, their, their impact on our, our society, the value of it, good or bad, and I agree with you that they have made huge profits, but we, they, they still provide sales tax for us, they still provide employment for many people in the community. One of the biggest employers in that shopping center, Dempster Dodge, is Valley Foods. They employ, they have followed up and on so many commitments to the city to hire Evanstonians. They came into that, that shopping center when it was depressed and not, not thriving at all. We need to make sure they're at the table discussing this with us. So once again, special orders of business are special topics. This is something that is a critical issue throughout the United States, and we need to discuss it thoroughly through our proper procedures.
Councilmember Burns?
As far as I understand it, this is not a permanent wage increase. Hazard pay is temporary. And so I want to be clear that that's kind of what, the second I'm providing is, is on hazard pay, which is not a permanent wage increase. I think, I gave it a second, because this is time-sensitive, if we are to take action on this, it is time-sensitive. The hazard is now, to a certain degree, and even more so, it was back in March. And so the model that I like, I, I think there's an alternative model where we can, might be to do something retroactively. So although Councilmember Reed and I may have differences on some of the details, my understanding is us placing this on the next meeting as a special order of business acknowledges the time-sensitive nature of the fact that this is really a response to COVID, and people are going to work every day. And again, if we are to take action on it, on hazard pay, which again, is not a permanent wage increase, I think this is the time to either do it or not do it. But I just want to be clear that I share the same concerns about the impact to business, businesses, both in my ward but across the city, which is why I have some alternatives that, in this time, I would like to, to work with Councilmember Reed and our staff to present. But I want to be clear, I'm not, I did not second something that I believed would be a permanent wage increase, and also I would like to propose some alternative ways of doing this, if we are going to move forward on it.
Councilmember Winn?
Mr. Mayor, I believe we're discussing the substance of the legislation, and I think that's, that is out of order.
Yeah, that seems fair. Yeah, so I think we, unless there's, unless there's further discussion on the motion before us, which is a motion to place a special order of business on the agenda, I think we should move to the vote.
For introduction.
For introduction only. Just in full transparency, I'm getting some conflicting guidance from different constituencies regarding whether or not this motion is in order. So my intention is, in light of the ambiguity, to ask the clerk to call the roll, and to make my commitment, in light of the fact that I believe the motion was made in good faith and is. faith and is consistent with my reading of the rules, that should the motion pass, if it's, if there's a continued disagreement about its appropriateness, I will then, as mayor, put this item on the, on the agenda, because I do believe that the, the rules call for that. So with that, will the clerk call the roll?
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Braithwaite?
No.
Councilmember Wayne?
No.
Councilmember Newsma?
No.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Yes.
I mean, sorry, Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Yes.
Councilmember Vervell?
No.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Flemings?
Aye.
So on a five to four vote, the motion carries? And this item will be on the agenda for introduction on May 24th. Is that the end of your?
Yes, that is most certainly the end of my call of the wards. Thank you.
Councilmember Fleming?
Thank you to my family, most of them who have left, but my mother is still here. I would be remiss not to highlight my ancestors who served in city politics before me. So I had Sam White and Edna Summers and Jerome Summers and Michael Summers and Rochelle White Washington. Bobby Burns, no pressure, but I hope you make the Fifth Ward proud for my family, all of whom still live there. I do not look forward to fielding any phone calls on your behalf this term, so please call folks back. But I appreciate the new people who are here. Welcome. It is a thankless, hard job, so thank you for doing it. It is a great service for our community. When I started, unfortunately, there was a bit of a unspoken hierarchy, so I want to let you know that we are peers. I appreciate what you guys bring to the table. I know about two more things than you, and that's how to work these buttons. And so I look forward to working with you as a peer, giving you any advice that I have, but also looking to get advice and input from you all, so we start on the same playing field on my book. To Mayor Biss, I didn't think about your name, thank you for the conversations we've had thus far. I know you see already that I am not easy to agree with necessarily, but I appreciate you, you hanging in there. To the residents of the Ninth Ward, thank you for having me for my second and final term. I've been very clear that I will only serve twice. I believe in term limits. So as we work in the ward together, I will be looking for some of you all to step up for this next term, so we can keep our ward represented appropriately. And then just to my husband, who carted off the elders, thank you for every Tuesday morning telling me to stick with this job. Thank you for always pushing me to stick to my guns, to be true to myself, to vote my conscience, and to not worry about what other people think of me. So I appreciate that. If you all don't like that about me, you can blame him. But he and my mother probably are my biggest supporters and biggest pains, but they keep me going, so thanks, Mom, for that. I would just announce that I am also having a ward meeting. It is next Wednesday, which I think is the 18th. We are going to be back in person at the Robert Crown, maybe with a streaming option possible, but I am not sure. But we will socially distance in space, and we can actually finally get out and see Robert Crown. At that meeting, there are a couple of big things we'll discuss, which is the Oakden Street redesign is maybe the name of it, so please participate in that conversation. I will also be going over the, the goals for the ward, which you all so graciously have helped me work through, so we will look at those goals for the ward and what you guys want me to accomplish here on the dais these next four years. And then also, we are going to be continuing our community building that we started during COVID, and so we have a whole schedule of Ninth Ward activities. They are obviously open to anybody. We are not checking ID, but they are specifically in and around the Ninth Ward. So we'll have yoga, we'll have some guitars, we'll have some zumba, all kinds of things to kind of bring us back together after this long time away. I have one referral that is not controversial. We do not need a vote. We do not need Robert's rules of order. I do need to look on my phone for it, though. I would like to make a referral to the Rules Committee, and let me make sure I have this right, so we don't have to go to Corporation Council. So I would like us to look at our City Code 1-4, 1-7-4, that has to do with the city manager's appointment of the deputy clerks. I would like us to revisit that, to bring the deputy clerk's office back into reporting to our new city clerk, Mendoza, so she can have a complete office and execute the duties of her office with the right amount of support, so we can get that on the Rules Agenda, I think, which is May 10th? May 24th, thank you. That would be great. And that will be, I guess, for introduction as well, for discussion. And that is all I have. Thank you all who came, who stayed. Thank you for your support of my colleagues, so they can do their job, and thank you for your support of Evanston.
That concludes?
Oh, wait, I have one more thing, I'm sorry.
That does not conclude.
One more thing, sorry. Happy 18th birthday to my twins. What are their names? Cole, Cole and Genevieve, who are turning 18 tomorrow and headed off to college this fall. So you see, one came, one is over this job. But thank you all for letting me be your mom and, and show the world what you can do.
The next item on the agenda is remarks from Clerk Mendoza.
I want to thank the residents of Evanston for placing me here and for trusting me to, to make sure that our city is transparent and there's accountability. Already, I'm being put to work, so thank you for that, Council. And I want to thank everyone who came out, you know, to vote for me, and, you know, those of you who did not vote for me, I'd like to, you know, work with you as well, to see what I can do to make the clerk's office what you want it to be. I'm looking forward for our clerk's office to serve our community, to bring services back to our clerk's office, so it's open to our community members. I really do want to thank my family for sticking with me through, through everything. My husband, who for many, many years has helped me place yard signs for other people, and now he's helped me place yard signs for myself, and in the middle of the night. And he's always been there anytime I need any type of anything. I want to thank my kids for all of, all that they do. They're so supportive, and my daughter, even through this, she's, she's being amazing. And, le quiero dar gracias a mis papas por siempre apoyarme y estar ahí por mí y quererme y siempre desearme lo mejor y empujarme a hacer cosas grandiosas. También le quiero dar gracias a la comunidad por todo su apoyo, por ser maravillosos, por votar y aunque no puedan votar, por hacer que sus voces sean escuchadas. Y espero que encuentren una casa ahora dentro de la ciudad donde puedan venir y puedan hablar conmigo sobre sus preocupaciones, sobre lo que necesitan y ser un, una puerta donde ustedes pueden venir con nuestros consejales a pedir ayuda. To translate, kind of translate that. You know, I hope to be a place where the community can come, where I can be a bridge for them and our council members, and be supportive to you guys as well, make sure you guys can support our community in the best way possible. Thank you so much.
And with, with great appreciation for everyone's patience, the next item on our agenda is some comments from me. First of all, I want to thank Judge Baptiste for being a part of this. You know, given the priorities of this community and the actions of the last and this next council, to be sworn in by a person who I believe was the first person behind this dais to push the idea of reparations, it means a lot, and it means a lot to our whole community. And so I want to thank you, thank you very much for that. Thank you to Pastor Dillard, who seems to have made a kind of wise lifestyle choice and is, is now elsewhere, but his, his leadership in the community and his words earlier tonight are both, both critically important. I want to first and foremost thank my family, Karen, Aria, and Theodore, who are here tonight, and my, my parents and brother, who are watching from, from far away. You know, I'm still not entirely sure why they thought this was a good idea, for me to do this, but I know that I wouldn't be doing it if they didn't, and, and their, their support and love isn't, it's not just like I couldn't do it without them, it's also, I believe what I believe and am who I am because of all they teach me every day. And, you know, I guess Aria especially knew something. Last summer, before, before the idea of running for this office was, was in my mind, Aria was like, you know what we ought to do? We ought to make a cardboard city. And I was like, well, there's a pandemic, so sure, let's make a cardboard city. And we finished that cardboard city this afternoon. So I've had a year-long crash course given to me by a 12-year-old on municipal design, and I hope that will prepare me for this office, but I know that everything else that you teach me every day, all three of you, prepares me for this office, so thank you. I want to thank the staff of the city of Evanston, who have been so encouraging and flexible, as I get up to speed and as all of us come to this dais with new ideas and the expectation of changing practices. Y'all saw a lot of that tonight, right? There were aspects of the last half hour that weren't like most Calls of the Wards during city council swearings in, and that's because a lot of things are going to change around here. And we have a staff that has been excited by that change and is, is ready to embrace that change. And I just can't thank all of you enough for, for the partnership that you've, that you've demonstrated in helping to educate me and, and expressing enthusiasm about working together. So thank you so much for all you do for, for our city. Obviously, I'm beyond excited to work with all nine of you and Clerk Mendoza, appreciative of your sacrifice, your, your commitment to service, your deep desire to make our community all that it can be, your commitment to work together collaboratively, as we must do. And I want to also make a point of thanking not only Mayor Hagerty and the other members of council, who served until just an hour or so ago, and did so much for the city and gave so much to the city, but also to thank everybody else who ran for office this year, whether it was other folks who ran for mayor, or other folks who ran for council or clerk. It's hard, strange work, and, and I'm really appreciative, and I think it says a lot about this community, that so many people wanted to step up to run. So thank you to, to all of them. I want to thank the incredible collection of volunteers who stepped up to be a part of our campaign. Marjorie Benton was here earlier. She's, she's joined Pastor Dillard in the ranks of people who have somewhere else to be at this hour, but, but she was part of an army of, of people who chose to be a part of a really, really meaningful campaign that, again, taught me a great deal and, and guided me forward. And I want to thank the voters of Evanston, not only those who voted for me, though obviously I'm appreciative of them, but those who voted for somebody else for mayor, to whom I am equally responsible and accountable, and to whom I'm equally committed to listen. And by the way, I think it's important for us to acknowledge that the great majority of Evanstonians neither voted for us nor against us, but didn't show up, and we work for them too. We work for them too. And I'm committed to remembering that also, that every single person in this, in this city, whether they're an eligible voter or not, whether they chose to vote or not, whether they voted for me or voted for somebody else, they're all my boss, and they're all somebody that I have a commitment to learn from. You know, these, these swearing-in ceremonies are, you know, I've been through several of them now, and they always hit me really hard emotionally, because there's, there's a kind of a magic that they represent, a kind of an almost alchemy that they represent, right? Where you, you show up, if you're not an incumbent, you show up as yourself, and then you raise a few, your hand and say a few words, and you become not just yourself any longer, but the vessel of the priorities and hopes of thousands of people. And then you're, you're invested with this power to, to sit on this, on this dais and in, in most of your cases, periodically say the word yay or nay, and watch our community change a little bit, on behalf of those people who sent us here to do that work. And so it's, I, I try to really think hard and remember the sacred nature of that relationship that we have to those who, who sent us here. And I'm cognizant of the fact that this is kind of a hard time to remember that. We're sitting here in a pandemic, and in fact, it feels like this incredible gift to be in a room together. There's a lot of people who I'm used to seeing extremely frequently for years and years and years, until last March, and haven't laid eyes on since then, and it feels, feels really good to do that now. But I, I know that we're not doing that most of the time, and, and we wind up in some, in social media bubbles sometimes, in echo chambers, and unsure of who all those thousands of folks who sent us here are, and unsure of whether or not we're hearing all of them. And I, I just know that we, we have to do our best to find as many different ways as possible to solicit all that input and all those views, because it can be, it can be hard to know for sure. I, you know, I think it's, it's appropriate to acknowledge, even as we sit here tonight in a spirit of compromise and collaboration and with enthusiasm to work together, that we, there was a pretty rough campaign that occurred just, just a few months ago, and it was, it was hard, and, and, and I think often that occurred because different people on different sides of issues felt like they weren't really being heard. They weren't really sure their opinion mattered. And I think we have a real opportunity to take that burden seriously, to understand that whatever I think, and whatever the 40 people who I hear from most on social media think, there's a lot of other folks out there who may or may not feel like they are being heard right now, and whose voices matter. And, and I, I feel like we can often get caught up in the question of, you know, hey, is that point of view the point of view of one, or 10, or 50, or 1,000, or 40,000 Evanstonians? And, and that's like a philosophy question a lot of the time. And, and at the end of the day, the way that I try to solve it is by not, when I'm hearing from someone, not asking, am I hearing from somebody who's got 10,000 folks standing behind them, but just to say, I'm hearing from somebody, and they're my boss. And so I'm going to listen really carefully and take their opinion into account really seriously, and maybe agree and maybe not, but if I don't agree, learn something about them and myself and our community. And I think we, we have an opportunity now with, with a really wonderful mix of experienced people and incumbents who've served, in some cases for four years, in some cases for, for more years, together with all this new energy at the same time on the council. It's the best of all worlds. It's, it's experience, real experience, knowledge, knowledge about policy, institutional knowledge, sitting next to new energy and new ideas and passion and commitment. And I just, I just feel so excited about what we can do together with that mix. And, you know, knowing that that doesn't mean that we're always going to agree, knowing that good process doesn't mean talking everything out until we get to consensus. Good process means talking everything out until we understand each other's points of view really well, and we've taken them seriously and treated them with respect, and then find five or maybe more votes who can agree on a course forward. You know, I think, I think that sometimes that distinction between listening carefully with respect and expecting consensus is a distinction that can get folks tripped up. And I think that we'll be successful, the 11 of us together, if we can bear in mind what the goal is and what a realistic goal is and what, what the goal cannot be. So I know that we have a ton of work ahead, whether it's just managing our way through what we believe and expect and hope are the latter stages of this pandemic, or overcoming the financial challenges that are endemic to local government in America, not just Evanston. We're working on the various other exciting ideas that brought most of us to public service in the first place, ideas around equity and reform of public safety and climate justice and more. We've got a lot to do, but we have a ton, a ton of talent and energy sitting at this table, and many, 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 many-fold more talent and energy located in this community to help us do it, and I just cannot wait for all of us to do that work together. I don't, I'm not a member of council, it's not Call of the Wards. I don't have a referral. I'm not going to make a motion, because I don't get to do that, but I do have one thing to announce. In keeping with a consistent theme and commitment that I made throughout my own campaign, I'm going to appoint an ad hoc committee on reimagining public safety, a committee that's going to have an ambitious and tight timeline with the goal of, of working in time to have meaningful recommendations for consideration in the 2022 budget process. I'm incredibly honored and appreciative of the diverse and remarkably knowledgeable and expert group of folks who agreed to be a part of that. I also am well aware that that group of people cannot possibly represent the full, the full... I also am well aware that that group of people cannot possibly represent the full, the full quilt of views and knowledge and experience in this community. And so I am making an open invitation for anybody in this town who wants to be a part of that effort to raise their hand, to speak up. We are prepared to take on what is perhaps the most difficult and controversial issue before us, but is also, from both a quality of life and a budgetary standpoint issue, perhaps the most significant one, and I, I cannot wait to get started. So with that, I appreciate everybody here who has demonstrated clear commitment to build a better Evanston by your presence. I sit here today with extraordinary levels of excitement and a lot of humility about both how difficult the task ahead will be and how much I have to learn, and I just say, let's get started. And with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So Councilmember Braithwaite moves to adjourn. Councilmember Winn seconds. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Braithwaite?
Yes.
Councilmember Winn?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Vervell?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Flemings?
Aye.
And with that, the first meeting of the 81st City Council of Evanston stands adjourned.